Appeals meeting to order, can we start with a roll call?
Mary Semenera.
James Moir.
Aziz Essam.
Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
Thank you, can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't have to talk about snow this time, right?
And now you jinxed us.
I know, really, alright, so our next two meetings are going to be Tuesday, April 24th and Tuesday, May 22nd. We do have one set of meeting minutes to approve, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 27th with very, very few amended, suggested amendments?
So moved as amended.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, no problem. Okay, we have before us two decisions, but again, I don't think Tom or Pam have we heard anything about number one at all?
No.
No, okay, so there's really not, there won't be no action on number one, and so we have two decisions that we've already had a public hearing on, closed the public hearing, and the board just needs to come to a decision on. Then we have a couple of public hearings on where the board has had an opportunity to review the application, and now it's an opportunity for us to hear from neighbors if you have any concerns or are in support of your neighbor's appeal. And then the last two items on our agenda are reviews, which for the most part are the first time we're seeing something, but those will not have opportunity for public comment on those this evening. So again, there's no action on item number one, so we're going to start with item number two, Appeal 3860, Morgan Pena, Joanna Morgan and Fred Pena, 2 Kane Drive, Stormville, are requesting an interpretation of what is considered a front yard for a corner lot pursuant to Section 194-100 of the zoning ordinance. Would somebody like to offer the resolution?
Sure, reference to Appeal number 3860 by Joanna Morgan and Fred Pena, request an interpretation of what is considered a front yard for a corner lot pursuant to Section 194-100 of the zoning ordinance, property being located at 2 Kane Drive. Whereas applicant has applied for an interpretation of what is considered a front yard for a corner lot pursuant to Section 194-100 of the zoning ordinance, whereas this is a type two action under sec where no further action is required, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the applicant's property is a corner lot located at intersection of Lee Town Road and Kane Drive. The subdivision map creating the lot contains a notation that access will be derived from Kane Drive. Section 194-100 of the town's zoning ordinance determines that a corner lot has two front yards requiring front yard setbacks appropriate to the residential district requirements. The front facade of a home is not the determining factor of a front yard, but rather the presence of lot frontage on a street. The lot in question has two front yards, each requiring a 50-foot setbacks, in this case from Kane Drive and Ritter Road. While no request for a variance of the required setbacks has been made, it can be noted that construction and other uses on the premises violates the required setbacks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Alright, thank you, so that's our first item of business. Alright, so number two is our first public hearing, Appeal 3861, Paritor, Alberto and Mary Paritor, 109 Broadway, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot fence in front of the front, in front of the front line of the house pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Are the Paritors here? Oh, come on up, okay. So we had an opportunity to review your application last month, you have a flag lot, so, and where your, the front of your house actually faces, the facade of your house actually faces essentially along the pole?
Right.
And not really toward the front of the lot, which is why where you put this pen for your two Siberian Huskies ends up being in the, in your front yard.
Right.
And so apparently when the town came out to do an inspection relative to something else, they brought it to your attention that the six-foot pen, which you specifically told us you needed because you have two large dogs that are capable of jumping pretty high.
Oh yeah.
But we also discussed the fact that, you know, based on the topography of your lot, the rest of your lot kind of goes down a bit, so you don't really have another flat area that you can work with. The pen is not really visible, we actually did get two letters from your neighbors, so I will read those into the record.
Actually, there's three letters.
There's a third letter?
Yes, there's three.
Yes, there's three.
I have copies. I gave you two of the renters plus the owner.
Right, so the, okay, so it's three.
Because there's two houses on that lot.
Right, I have two letters.
You have three.
Okay, well, in the meantime, while I look for that, so is there anything else that you wish to add to the summary that I've given at this point? No, is there, are there any questions or comments from board members?
No, thank you.
No? Alright, so we have opened this for public comment, let me just read the letters that we have, I'll read Pam's copy of them so I know we have the right one. So the first one is dated March 2nd, 2018, "My name is Sarah Santoro, I reside at 107 Broadway, Hopewell Junction, let it be known that I have no issues, no problems with my neighbor's fence on 109 Broadway, the Paritor residence." So that's your first one. "March 4th, 2018, to whom it may concern, we are the residents of 107 Broadway, neighbors to 107, to 109 Broadway. In regard to the location of the dog fence at 109 Broadway, we are not in any way inconvenienced or take any issue with the location, we see no reason that a permit for the fence cannot be issued." And then the third is the owner of the property, right, I did see the electronic version of this one, "Dated March 22nd, to whom it may concern, I am a managing member of Mossy Properties LLC, the owner of 107 Broadway, Hopewell Junction. It has come to my attention that our next-door neighbors, Alberto and Mary Paritor, have requested a variance for a fence located in the technical front of their home. I am writing in support of the issuance of said variance. Thank you very much for your attention to the matter, please don't hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns you may have, and it's signed, Megan Mossy." Alright, so yes, we do have three letters. One of the, one of the things that we did raise at the last meeting was whether you would have any concern if we limited the time of, for allowing this pen there to your residency, and if we made our resolution subject to when you go to sell your house, that you would actually remove the pen.
That's fine.
Okay, you seemed to indicate it the last one, I just wanted to, because this is now a public hearing, I just wanted to get it on the record. For your purposes, you've defined it, you've made it, you've essentially justified why it makes sense for you to have it, thank you. But again, for a future use, I think.
Oh absolutely.
I think we'd want, that your neighbors would want that future use to come back and be revisited with, does it make sense again to continue with that? So, you know, with, if you don't mind, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the appeal from Alberto and Mary Paritor, 109 Broadway, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot fence in front of the front line of their house? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Sure. I'm just.
Oh, sorry?
It's not a problem, I'm going to abstain, just, I'm concerned weighing it back and forth. The, one letter was written by Megan Mossy, she's known to me, so.
Oh, okay.
To avoid any kind of appearance of conflict, I'll abstain from whatever the decision would be.
That's fine, no problem.
Okay, this is Appeal number 3861 with Alberto and Mary Paritor. It's for a two-foot variance for a existing six-foot fence which is located in front of the front line of the dwelling pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance at 109 Broadway, Hopewell Junction, resolution offered by zoning board member Mary Semenera. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above-stated variance, and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the fence is used as a dog enclosure and the applicant's rear property drop, rear property drops is not flat enough to accommodate this penned area, the variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions as it has been there for approximately 10 years. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above-stated variance with the following condition, prior to the transfer of this property, any fenced-in dog area that exceeds four feet in height in front of the dwelling shall be removed, will be removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Abstained.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set, okay?
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Alright, item number four, Appeal 3862, Flick, Joseph Flick, 56 Winter Green Place, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a one-foot variance for an existing five-foot fence pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Good evening.
Hello.
Alright, so we had an opportunity last month to review your application, as we mentioned, we had actually seen you before, you had actually approached us before you had installed the fence, and we, but we didn't have a survey at that time, and so we had recommended that you get a survey done, you've now had that survey done, but you've also now also installed the fence, so, but instead of this, you're now requesting just for an additional one foot, you mentioned that you have some dogs.
Yes.
And so, and we also talked about the fact that this fence in the front of your house is significantly, you know, far away from your nearest neighbor.
Right, yes.
I understand, it's at least 400 feet, right?
From the, from the cul-de-sac, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, and there's vegetation and.
Yeah.
Screening and everything in the area as well. Trying to remember if we had, do we, what is the color of the fence?
White, it's white vinyl, post and rail.
So it is, it is more visible, but it's, again, because of the screening, you have a really, really heavily vegetated lot, that it's really not visible.
Yeah, and it kind of matches the style of the house anyway, it's not like it, you know, sticks out.
So again, having had the opportunity to review this last month, are there any comments or questions from board members?
By me, thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request of Joseph Flick, 56 Winter Green Place, Hopewell Junction, requesting a one-foot variance for an existing five-foot fence? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
This is Appeal number 3862, applicant is Joseph Flick, requesting a one-foot variance for an existing five-foot fence that's located in front of the front line of the dwelling pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. It's located at 56 Winter Green Place, Hopewell Junction, so, resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Essam, whereas applicant has applied for the above variance, and whereas the board moves to adopt the standard decision and order, and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the house is approximately 420-foot back from the front, from front property line and the existing fence is approximately 25 feet in front of the front line of the house, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant has two German Shepherds and he wants to make sure.
That, wants to.
That's the, that stay on his property.
Right.
The variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions as it is approximately 400 feet back from the front line, front property line, and at least two feet from the side property line. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above-stated variance.
Is there a second?
Second?
Okay, I'm just going to make a comment before we vote on this.
Sure.
I just want to be clear, we're not going to ask you to remove this because yours is a decorative fence.
Right.
As opposed to, the last application was a pen specifically for the dogs.
Right.
It was about, I want to say like 25 by 50-foot pen, so we're not asking for this to be taken down because this is truly a decorative fence. So with that said, votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have a good evening. Item number five, Appeal 3863, Heitman, Gregory Heitman, 17 East Hook Cross Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 13-foot front line variance for an existing sunroom and a variance for a pool located in front of the house pursuant to Sections 194-94 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Good evening. So again, we've, you've had the pleasure of seeing multiple times.
Yes.
So you have a property that, where the house was built years ago, it was built before zoning existed, the way your house is turned or faces, it kind of faces away from the street, because it's more, my understanding is you're a relative also owns.
Well, it's a family compound.
Yeah, so it's.
That's correct.
There's multiple houses in very close proximity, kind of with your own private street in there, almost.
Yeah, sort of.
Private drive.
Yeah.
And so your house really faces a different direction than facing the street.
Correct, yes.
And so over the course of the last couple of years, you've constructed a sunroom, you put an in-ground pool in, so you've done some construction on the site without any permits, that aside, the building department will deal with that, and apparently the pool, there used to be a pool on that property, but you said it was actually in the physical.
That's correct.
In your, actually, well, your physical front yard as opposed to the actual, the real front yard.
Correct.
And so, but that's been filled in, that doesn't exist anymore. The one question that I had after we met about this last time is, the one side of the pool that actually is closest to the street, is there a retaining wall there? What's actually holding up the side of the pool on that side?
It's huge boulders, like five to six-foot boulders that were.
Okay, I know you said you, you have experience in construction, but.
I'm a civil engineer also.
Yeah, okay, alright, so you're kind of answering the question, I was really concerned, has an engineer actually looked to make sure, because water is heavy.
Right, no, I'm a structural engineer.
Weight of the water on a wall has the ability of.
Yeah, there's bendow movement, yeah.
That's.
Zero movement.
Okay, is there a liner inside the pool? What's actually?
Yeah, no, it's a liner, yeah.
Okay, so you'd actually see it bubbling, you know.
No, you'd see cracks in the cement, in their cement, yeah.
Okay, because, and how tall is that wall?
Well, it's.
Well, you said it's, it's boulders, but it's boulders outside the wall of the pool.
Outside the perimeter of the pool, and the, the pool wall itself is only four feet, and that was poured on concrete, so concrete was poured, there's a rim board poured, and then steel.
Inside the wall.
Inside the pool, and then concrete was poured around the steel, and then rebar all around that.
And it doesn't, that, that, the wall does not exceed four feet?
The pool wall is only four feet, yeah, and then it's sloped down.
How about the structural wall, is that?
Well, so, the pool is only like six and a half feet deep, it's only, so it slopes up to four feet where there's a, a footing for the, the pool, and then the, the pool walls are steel, and then you bolt the steel to the footing, and then after the steel is in place, then you pour steel, pour concrete around that with rebar that holds it all in place, so there's, there's no.
Alright, but you, as an engineer, you're.
As an engineer, there's absolutely, yeah.
You're willing to stamp plans that actually can be filed with the building department because any future owner of that property is really going to want to know that some engineer is.
Oh absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, again, the building department did not have the benefit of reviewing the footings as they went in or anything else, so it's, that's, this is one of the reasons we really, really don't like to.
No, I understand, I understand.
See things after the fact, but, but that said, the fact that you are an engineer and you very clearly told us you had multiple years of a construction experience, at least gives us some benefit that, you know, the construction was, was done well, and it's your own personal property, so you're not going to, you have no interest in seeing it collapse. And the sunroom actually, we kind of just said, the sunroom actually blocks the pool.
Right.
So it actually makes that pool that's in, ends up being in your real front yard less visible, so.
Correct.
You know, I think we're, at least from my perspective, I was a little, we don't generally like to approve.
I understand.
Variances for pools because they're not, you know, they were more recreation and not mandatory or anything like that, it's not to like clean up a yard or some, so it offers some concern about the noise, but again, the other property owner is, is your neighbor or is your, is your family member.
Right.
The street is in front of you and it goes around the curve for a bit there, so you don't really have neighbors that would be bothered by use of the pool in this case. So, you know, in that, with that said, I think I'm willing to move this forward. So any other comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
No? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request of Gregory Heitman, 17 East Hook Cross Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 13-foot front line variance for an existing sunroom and a variance for a pool located in front of the house?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Oh sure, come on up.
I live next door.
Can, if you don't mind, just state your name for the record.
My name's William Hyatt, and I own 25 and 27 East Hook Cross Road.
Okay.
We have the same property line, and I don't have any problems with anything he needs, everything's okay, there's no problems with it.
Good, thank you, we appreciate your coming out.
Yep.
Well done. Yeah, if you don't mind, there's a clipboard on the corner of that table, if we can ask you and anybody else that might want to speak at any of the public hearings, if we could just ask you to sign in just so we have a record of it for our minutes, thank you. Anybody else? So seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Appeal number 3863 for Gregory Heitman, 13-foot front line variance for an existing sunroom and a variance for a pool located in front of the house pursuant to Section 194-94 and 94-95, the zoning ordinance, 17 East Hook Cross Road in Hopewell, resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas this applicant has applied for the above-stated variances, and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as both structures are existing and the house which has been built, which was built approximately 68 years ago does not face the front yard. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the lot is rocky, thus making it difficult to have a pool in the rear of the house. The variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions as there is a retaining wall approximately 30 feet above the road which makes it difficult to see the property from the roadway. Now therefore be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above-stated variances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries.
Thank you.
Now just make sure you deal with the building department so that.
Absolutely.
Everything's taken care of out there, thank you. Alright, item number six, Appeal 3864, Survey, Jeffrey Survey, 15 Railroad Avenue, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 29-foot front line and 12-foot sideline variance for a proposed 18-foot by 20-foot detached garage, a nine-foot sideline and a seven-foot rear line variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot shed, and a 40-foot front line variance for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling pursuant to Section 194-107C, 194-107B1B, and 194-121 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Good evening.
Good evening.
So again, we had the opportunity to just review your application with you last month, where you are on Railroad Avenue, the lots over there are, that's, it's the nature of being in Old Town, those lots are, are small, so you have very limited room in your yard, your rear yard, pretty much to do anything, plus one of the conditions we had to deal with here is the fact that your house was built closer to the street, but again, back in the days when this was built.
1997, exactly.
Yeah, it was, the same conditions didn't exist, so.
Right.
So we're not going to make you move your existing house, nothing like that, we're just going to clear up that variance while we're at it. So you're looking to just add a detached garage, which will actually improve the appearance of your yard and everything else, so, and then there was an existing shed on the property, the 10-foot by 10-foot shed?
Which I believe was addressed during a previous addition to a front porch several years ago.
You think this was addressed already?
It was, yeah.
Oh, so you have a variance for that already?
Yeah, there should have been, it was on the COI, I believe, but anyway, move, move forward.
Okay, well, I mean, has it been moved at all?
I don't know, no, it hasn't been moved.
Okay, let's.
Yeah, exactly.
Put it in place now at any, you know, so again, if we, we talked about actually putting the garage more behind your house, but.
Yeah, it's not feasible, right?
It's actually better off being much closer to the driveway and the street, so.
Yeah, and also dry wells, you know, in that area too, so, that would be on top of the dry wells.
Right, so I, are there any questions or comments from board members?
Again, if the shed had been.
Addressed?
Addressed in the past, I think it's better to cover it in this thing and just in case, because now we have a survey, we have exact numbers, so I'd rather have it addressed a second time even if it's duplication, so.
Right.
Alright, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request of Jeffrey Survey, six, sorry, 15 Railroad Avenue, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 29-foot front line variance and a 12-foot sideline variance for a proposed garage, a nine-foot sideline and seven-foot rear line variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot shed, and a 40-foot front line variance for his home? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.
Alright. Sure.
This is Appeal number 3864, Jeffrey Survey, for a 29-foot front line and 12-foot sideline variance for a proposed 18-foot by 20-foot detached garage, and a nine-foot sideline and seven-foot rear line variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot shed, and a 40-foot front line variance for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling pursuant to Sections 194-107C, 194-107B1B, and 194-121 of the zoning, zoning ordinance. This is at 15 Railroad Avenue, Hopewell Junction, resolution offered by zoning board member Mary Semenera. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above-stated variances, and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the property is a pre-existing non-conforming use in an industrial zone where the lots are small and there is limited open space. The garage is being designed to complement the existing house and the shed has been on the property for several years. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the septic is located in the rear of the property. The variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above-stated variance.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Now you deal with the building department, okay?
Okay.
Yes, all right, thank you. All right, item number seven, Appeal 3865, Kalella, Joseph Kalella, 247 Resecue Road, Stormville is requesting an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling in order to build a 28-foot-by-24-foot attached garage and a 10-foot frontline variance for a proposed front porch pursuant to Sections 194-121 and 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Aye.
So last month, we looked at your application for this property, knowing that you live right next door, okay, and this is an old house that's been there for years, that's been in your family. The lots, there are three lots in this area that were all undersized, so they're non-conforming in that sense, and the, there's currently a detached garage on the property now that you're going to tear down, and you're, what you're asking for is to be able to replace, in essence, replace the garage by attaching it now to the house. And we also talked about adding a front porch to the house, which we all agreed would actually make the house look nicer. It actually gives it a more sense of a, of a being a residence and gives it a nicer, you know, a little bit more curb appeal, so.
Right.
I really, I didn't have any concerns there, so are there any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Anything you want to add? No? So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Joseph Kalella, 247 Resecue Road, Stormville, requesting an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling to build an attached garage and a 10-foot variance for a proposed front porch? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
This is Appeal number 3865, applicant is Joseph Kalella, is requesting an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling in order to build a 28-feet-by-24-feet attached garage.
Thank you.
Yeah, just want to correct it. And a 10-foot frontline variance for a proposed front porch pursuant to Sections 194-121 and 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. It's located at 247 Resecue Road, Stormville, resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan.
I think there's an error here.
Where?
Because the address is not 247 for this parcel. It's 239. I live at 247. I know. I figured I'd bring it up now.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yeah, you're right. Okay, let's, okay, let me, yeah, okay, so, and the.
Because I got to go to the building department next.
Signs are up.
I'm sorry?
Your sign is up at the property line?
Yeah, it's been up since.
And the grid number is correct, so.
Okay, thank you.
And as applicant, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and the loca, so I'm going to amend my.
Yep. Amend your motion.
I'm going to amend my motion to say that it's located at.
239.
239, 239, Resecue Road, Stormville, and this is how it was advertised. Was it advertised?
Is it street or road?
Correct grid number, street, so that.
But how was it advertised?
With that correct grid number.
With the grid number in advertisement, and the sign is at the right property.
Okay, so, okay, so then we are covered legally. Okay, so the location is 239 Resecue Road, Stormville, a resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance, and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the removal of the existing detached garage and the renovation of the existing dwelling will be an improvement to the property. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the lot is 0.59 acres in what is now an R3 zone. The request, the variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the, on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved, that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
And votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
All right. You too. Okay, item number eight, Appeal 3866, Proziba, sorry, I know I wrote this down from last, from last month, but Bernard Prozri, Prozriba.
Proziba, the T is silent.
The T is silent, thank you. So Proziba. One Charles Lane Reinbeck is requesting a 4-foot frontline and 14-foot rear line variance for a proposed 6-foot-by-8-foot covered entryway on a pre-existing building at 566 Route 82, Hopewell Junction, pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion?
It's not a pre-existing building. It's a brand-new building. We're going to build a new building on that site.
You're going to build, or you did build?
No, we're going to build.
He was demolished by fire, right, so, yeah, so it's a.
But for zoning purposes.
It's a pre-existing building footprint?
Right.
How about that? Let's just change that. Thank you for correcting us.
You're welcome.
All right, so do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we are open now. This is the site of the, there was a building there that was destroyed by fire, that, this is where the monuments, the cemetery stones are there.
The memorials, yes.
And so what you're proposing is to replace the building as it was, with the exception of, rather than encouraging the use of the front of the building on Route 82, you're actually asking for an en, a covered entryway that would be accessible at a grade level there, so that your patrons can actually come in from the parking lot without having to circle around from the, the front of the building to be able to enter.
Correct.
Correct? So, again, everything else?
I'm not the owner. I'm representing the owner. I'm not the owner.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm Mr. Kelly, right.
Got it, that's fine. So any other comments or questions? Again, the building is going to be essentially as it was. It's, we're just making the building more accessible and providing.
They're making the building much nicer than it was.
Yes, and make, and providing a covered entryway for your patrons.
Correct.
Comments or questions from board members? If not, is there anyone here to speak for or against the requested 4-foot frontline and 14-foot rear line variance for a proposed 6-foot-by-8-foot covered entryway on a pre-existing building footprint at 566 Route 82 in Hopewell Junction? Yes, come on up, if you don't mind.
I just want clarification.
Oh, can you please come down?
Just come to the microphone, so we can hear you.
So I'm just, I'm requesting some clarification on exactly what's going on. So you're, he's asking for 4-foot frontage or 14-foot frontage, is that correct?
He's asking to be able to put the building back where it was.
Okay.
Okay.
So he's using existing foundation, I'm assuming?
Going to use the existing footprint of the building, correct?
Okay, so I own Joe's Dairy Bar and the property that's on Joe's Dairy Bar, so I guess that's why I was invited here, but, so essentially, the only difference is, is going to be an entry from the back, is that my understanding?
From the side.
Be facing you, towards Joe's Dairy Bar.
Okay, so it'll be where the pizzeria entrance is going to be then? Where, where the pizzeria plaza is, is that correct? Where the stereo shop is?
Face the stereo shop.
Okay, and it's going to be a covered, okay, so.
Yeah, it's a covered way, but it'll be at grade, so that the patrons will be able, if they're, if they need to, will be able to just walk right in.
Okay, so there's no additional property being requested or anything? All right.
Not at all.
That's, I just wanted clarification.
It's just going to make the building look nicer, actually, so.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yep, no problem. Can we just ask you again, could we ask you to sign in, please?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is appeal number 3866. It's a 4-foot frontline and a 14-foot rear line variance for a proposed 6-foot-by-8-foot covered entry, covered entryway on a pre-existing building footprint pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance, and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, to the community, as the proposed change will enhance the new building as well as make the entrance more accessible, as it is at grade with the parking lot and is safer for the public as it is further away from Route 82. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance. Is there a second?
Second.
And votes as follows, Jim?
Just one clarification.
Sure.
The, the, the new porch entrance that we're asking for the variance, I still, there still will have to be a handicap ramp to get down to that elevation. It will not be the elevation of the parking lot. Parking lot is 18 inches above the property.
No, okay, we understood that, but the, the porch that's going to be there is going to be level with the doorstep, so this, this is going.
That grade, yes, that, that will be on grade, but will not be the same grade as the parking lot. I thought she said that.
We did discuss last month the fact that, when you were here, the fact that the parking lot was at a different grade, and that it would be brought up, you would provide an appropriate ADA access there.
Correct.
Okay, so I, I'm, oh, we're in agreement with what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So you're all set. Your motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thanks.
All right, and this is our last public hearing of the evening, and then we have two more reviews after that. So this is item number nine, Appeal 3867 Tucker, Scott Tucker, 109 Route 216, Stormville, is requesting a special permit to bring in 20,000 yards of fill in order to bring his lot on Seaman Road up to grade to prevent flooding, as it is used for farming purposes pursuant to Sections 194-75 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening. So we had an opportunity to review your application last month. You have an existing farming lot over there, and you're looking to resuscitate it, in essence, when by, and allow more farming, actually, in the area. You talked about growing corn and?
Corn and hay.
Okay, corn and hay, right, okay. And so, but there's an area that, kind of toward the back of the lot, that you want, you're looking to bring all this fill in. The code right now.
It's kind of in the center of the lot.
Okay, thank you for correcting my memory here. The, the code allows 375 cubic yards per year for a lot, but obviously, what you're asking for is significantly more than that. Your plan that you provided to us shows that you're going to maintain stormwater management practices on there, so that you're looking to help with the flooding issues, but you're just going to control the water on the lot a little bit better to be able to make more of that lot usable. We really discussed the fact that you really don't have many neighbors in that area, so, you know, they're really, and we certainly want to continue to encourage farming to the extent that we can in town, so. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
I had a concern. You mentioned that you're going to be bringing some fill, and you're going to have at least several monitoring stations. Can you explain what the?
Well, I was talking with the DEC today, and they're testing the fill on-site before it leaves there. And they're also going to test it, I personally, myself, I ordered the one that should be here tomorrow, but they're supposed to test it at the place, but before it comes to the site, it hasn't been tested. There's a little bit of a question going on right now with the DEC about whether bricks and, and rocks and stuff are okay, but little pieces of plastic and other debris is not, so we're having a meeting with them up at the lot. It's a whole different thing on Thursday, just to queer this up to make sure there will be none of that.
Okay.
Yeah, because, I mean, again, you're growing some corn.
But in the contract I have with the contractor, it says the fill will be clean fill, soil, rocks and fill, which meets New York State Department Conservation standards.
Okay, as long as.
That's right in the contract, which they've signed.
Can we just talk about the hours of the trucks that are going to be coming in again, just to get it on the record?
Between eight and five, weekdays only.
Weekdays only, so Monday to Friday?
Actually, probably more like eight and four. I don't think they'll be coming out that way.
Okay. And you've identified where the fill is coming from?
Various sites in Southern New York.
I guess that's maybe not quite clear to me. So they're going to be testing it at-site, meaning what?
Yeah, I didn't realize that, but they have paperwork on it, like, they brought some already, just to put a landing pad in. They brought in a few loads to bring in their equipment. And so the DEC came and everything, and they have paperwork on it before it even comes to my farm.
Okay, so wherever they're pulling it from, they're testing it there, and then you're asking them to test it again?
Well, yes, I'm going to be, be sure that it's the same.
This is his property now. He wants to be sure what's coming in is clean.
When you say outside, I didn't, wasn't sure whether it was your property or the place it was coming from, okay.
It sounds like it's being tested at both places.
Yeah, at the green, yeah.
It will be, because the thing is, again, if, again, some of the things, there might be construction debris, for example.
Yes, well, it was a, kind of, I wasn't aware, but I am now. There's an area what's considered clean fill and not, and what's allowed and what isn't. So we have to clarify that some for the DEC people.
Okay.
And we're going to meet with them, I guess, Thursday out there.
Can you clarify, why is DEC shepherding this? Why are they looking at?
All of a sudden, they just seen my signs out there, and, and they also put a lot of this fill in, over the animal rescue, where Bill and Amy Rescue, over on the Beekman Line.
Yeah.
And they're talking to them too. They just want to be sure it's clean.
Okay, so we're not talking about wetland or anything like that?
No, no, he was there, and he knows, he's aware of where the wetlands. I'm far away from the wetlands.
They're not issuing any permits or anything like that, or no?
No, he said, we're still talking about, might have to get a permit from the DEC. We're not sure.
For what?
I don't know. That's what we're going to talk about Thursday.
You'll find out.
For what?
Mining.
For mining, but he's not mining it?
No, we're not mining soil out. We're bringing it in. The permitting process.
Oh, okay, all right.
Because of the amount of, because of the amount of fill he's bringing, so it's.
They have limits they put on moving of material.
Okay.
From one location to another location, so the volume is such that it is considered mining, okay.
Yeah, what kind of records is the building department going to, is, are you familiar with what the building department's going to want?
No.
Do you issue any kind of permit at all for this?
Fill permit.
You issue a fill permit?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why I'm here.
Does your fill permit have?
Well, you're here to get a variance to get the right fill permit. Otherwise, you'd be just at 375 cubic yards.
So does your fill permit specify construction debris or topsoil or something like that? Or it just says whatever the.
Clean fill. Yeah, the code says clean. It says, I put that right in the contract, and I agree to a clean fill, and I also put New York DEC approved, to make sure there's no contaminants in it.
Got it.
That's the main thing I was, because I've heard bad stories about that. That's why I insisted it be tested. I even went and ordered one from Amazon, my own test strips. I'm going periodically check it myself.
Better to be safe than sorry, so.
Yeah, especially when you're going to be growing, especially in the farming community, because it's going to be used for generating.
Well, the fence comes up, now we'll be able to take a plow out there in the spring. Right now, you'd lose your tractor. You can't go out there until almost July.
How long do you think it's going to take to get all that in there?
About four or five months. I mean, it depends on how fast they bring it in.
Right, that's what I was curious. Okay. So this, but that's why you're saying, by the end of this year, you're going to be done.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak regarding the application of Scott Tucker, 109 Route 216, Stormville, requesting a special permit to bring in 20,000 cubic yards to fill in, in order to, to bring his lot on Seaman Road up to grade to prevent flooding? Yes, come on up. Mr. Tucker, if you don't mind, have you stuck to the side?
My name's Peter Kelly, Seaman Road, and I actually am the neighbor.
Good, okay.
So I'm here for clarification purposes. The sign says 200,000 yards of fill.
No, 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 20,000 yards.
So that's why I'm here. 200,000 yards of fill is a, is an island, so. 20,000 is still four, probably three or four months of hard trucking, so, and they're they're gonna run ten-wheelers, traxles down Seaman Road, as long as the road can handle, if we don't find any other damage. Mr. Tucker's been a great neighbor, I have no issue with his, with his filling his property, so.
Thank you very much for coming, if you don't mind signing in.
As long as twenty thousand, not two hundred thousand.
It's not two hundred thousand. Thank you for clarifying that. Math was never my strong point either. John, did you wanna comment?
Thank you.
Yeah, I follow up on the gentleman's comment. I also read the sign, it said two hundred thousand. That's why I came down tonight, and saying, oh my God, two hundred thousand yards on Seaman Road? Hmm. The only question I have is-
Yes.
You got a ten-foot bridge to go under. Do you realize that, the railroad bridge?
All right, hold on, let's make sure Mr. Tucker is hearing your comment here. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
John Parskev is raising the concern that there's a ten-foot bridge that your trucks will need to go under? Are the trucks-
No, we're not coming from that truck, we're coming from South Greenhaven Road. They won't, they will not come under that bridge, or through the development of Jew's Drive, they're gonna come from Greenhaven Road, which they've already been depositing a lot of fill on South Greenhaven Road.
Okay.
Well, the animal rescue thing is on South Greenhaven Road, and I was curious to establish that it's not coming over East Fischel Roads, per se, it's not coming under the bridge, and definitely shouldn't go through Jew's Drive, that just would be insane.
No, they're already-
And I had a little experience with this stuff coming out of New York City when I worked for the town.
Yeah.
It's not the nicest stuff in the world, I can tell you that.
That's why I'm glad he's learning before they've even started, so.
And so as not to hurt Mr. Tucker and his agricultural adventures, need to really keep a good eye on what comes in out of New York City, because there's many places in this town where soil is deposited that has, well, not good stuff in it.
Questionable stuff, yeah.
Yeah, very questionable.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I've heard some, I've heard some stories about it.
Yes. Is there anyone else? Yes, come on.
My name's Sean Bogart. I'm here, just mainly, I'm not for or against, I'm trying, just to gather some information for Carnehands. Patty Carnehan from Stormville Airport wasn't able to be here, 'cause of her health. We're just trying to figure out exactly where, I had stopped into the office last week, and it was difficult to ascertain exactly where the property was gonna be filled, because a great deal of it is New York State and federal floodplain. And, oh, you got some?
Yeah, if you have your map, that would be great, if you don't mind.
This is the airport, this is the property line and the fields, these are the New York floodpoints, this is federal floodpoints. This is the area right here, this is a long ways from the airport.
Can I steal that?
Yeah, you can, I got copies of it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, basically, I have to bring this back to Carnehands, and, because as you know, the water table's pretty high around the runway-
That's why he's doing this, yes.
Down, well, even on the airport, and, you know, I don't wanna encroach on the runway itself without getting home.
There's a hill between us.
Yeah, but the water, I mean, the water's gonna flow that way, it flows from your side down to 216.
There's already existing-
Mm-hmm.
-through there.
Right. Okay. That's all they were wondering-
We have had the town engineer review the plans, so, you know, and again, when he gets his fill permit, he'll-
Okay, so they, if they have questions, they can call the town engineer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because I know they had some-
You can call the building department, and depending upon who's reviewing this one, they would-
Okay, because they were just wondering, you know, the FAA's involved in everything else, as far as the runway and the operations of the airport, so they just wanted to be able to answer the questions when they came up.
Understood. Thank you for raising those concerns to us.
Thank you.
There's existing drainage.
Anybody else?
The west end.
All right. So do I have a motion to-
I don't think there's anything else. Again, we're gonna be making some of these limitations, as far as where the-
We're gonna reserve decision.
Scott has to, it goes from here, it's until the penalty comes down from the prison.
Is the, has the permit been filed? I understood it was.
Is their permit pending?
It hasn't been filed for?
So you may, you may wanna wait for any recent conditions.
Okay.
Yeah. So they'll close it yet?
Yeah.
Close it, but then it's up to-
So close and reserve.
Yeah. That's what I was gonna do.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Have you had any meeting yet with the town engineer regarding this?
Myself, no.
Could you please come to the thing, so that we can record it properly, to the mic, so we can record it?
Yeah.
Myself.
I thought I had understood you've actually filed for your permit, and Rick is telling me, no, you are-
I haven't talked to the town engineer.
Okay, all right. So we just wanna be sure that the town engineer is actually on board with your plan here, okay?
I thought you would've looked at these, I don't know. I assumed that, I'm kinda new at this process, how far you would've seen all this and understand.
Well, that's all right, they won't look at it till you actually file it.
Should they actually file a permit? That's what, we thought you had done that already.
Wasn't that what I'm doing now?
No, you're getting-
No, you're here to get a variance, because the permit you need is larger than what would, you could normally get.
Okay. So I'll be back tomorrow to file a permit.
Rather than have you go back and forth, and I think what the board's suggesting is they'll close the public hearing tonight, reserve decision, you meet with the engineer, and then they can put into their decision next month, any language that needs to be in there, you know, about the truck routes, the DEC issue, everything, and then it's complete, and, you know, get pants back and forth.
So I come see the town engineer tomorrow?
Well, I would meet with DEC, get that-
Okay, that's Thursday, we're gonna talk.
Bring that information in, make an appointment to see him, and they'll go over it, just to make sure everybody's on board.
Sounds good.
Because we wanna be sure that, you know, again, the neighbors are being protected here, that's all.
Okay.
Okay? Any-
Okay, so basically, we're gonna be closing-
And reserving-
Reserving the decision based on other factors, which you'll have-
Well, just, we just wanna be sure that if the town engineer has any special conditions normally associated with bringing in fill, that we include those in our decision, that's all.
So-
So is there a motion?
So my motion would be to close and reserve decision for incorporation of conditions that may be required by the town engineer.
And DEC. Town engineer and DEC, or just-
Well, the permit's gonna be for DEC.
Yeah, their permit's gonna be dependent upon whether they need a DEC permit as well, so I, I'm okay with that.
Second.
Good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so you don't actually need to come next month, we'll just, we'll issue a decision, and you'll get it.
Well, I'd like to talk to the town engineer.
Between now and, as soon as you can, get in and talk to the engineer.
Okay.
Okay?
And after Thursday, I got a lot to learn here.
Yeah, that's fine, no problem.
Thank you so much.
He's away this week, he won't be back the next week.
Oh, yes.
All right, well, I guess I got time.
It's spring break week for the kids, so.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
Yeah, good luck.
All right, item number 10, Appeal 3859 Aducee, have we, Pam, have we hear from them at all? Aducee? Okay, Krista and Kewani Aducee, 41 Brothers Road, Stormville, are requesting a ten-foot sideline variance for a proposed ten-foot by sixteen-foot shed, and a seven-foot sideline variance for a proposed pool equipment pursuant to sections 194-107B2 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. This is not a public hearing, this is only for review, and I do not see them here.
They were a no-show in January.
Right, but last month, when they were here, we did specifically send them to the DEC.
Okay.
And we were not sure how quickly DEC was going to act, so that's why I was just curious if Pam had heard, 'cause I didn't see them in the audience, so. So we're gonna expect that they are still dealing with DEC, because that, we do know that that can take a little while, so, so we'll just, it's, it's okay that there's no, here, they're not here, we're just gonna assume there's nothing new.
Okay.
All right, so with that, number 11, Appeal 3868 Nace, am I saying that right? Thank you. Kyle and Alicia Nace, 25 Oakbrook Lane, La Grainville, are requesting a eighteen-foot front line variance for a proposed house at 33 Mountain Pass pursuant to section 194-100 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is the first time we're seeing your application, so the idea is, we ask all of our questions now, so your public hearing can go proceed as the other ones you saw this evening, okay? So go ahead, take us through your application.
Can you do it?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Jamie McNiff from Leary Park's office, representing the applicant. They have a corner lot on Mountain Pass Road and Geneva Drive. It's a one-acre lot, which is similar to what's in the neighborhood. They're looking for eighteen-foot variance from the corner lot requirement, where they have to provide fifty feet off of Geneva Drive. They're providing well over fifty off of Mountain Pass, which is similar to what every other lot on the street has.
Okay.
And it's filing, the file map also indicates that they should take access to Mountain Pass Road, so that's what they're doing.
So, let me just make sure I'm understanding this, so you can get, can you get appropriate access from the one side?
We can get ex, we can have this at the fifty-foot requirement from Mountain Pass.
From Mountain Pass, okay.
But it's the other road that we don't have fifty feet for.
Geneva, okay, sorry.
I believe when it was approved back in the sixties, like, Geneva wasn't even there.
Okay.
It wasn't even a road, so there wouldn't have been a problem, so.
Okay. And, oh, okay, Ira, okay. Tell me what's the size of the footprint of this house? I mean, why are we, can't we shrink the house a little bit, honestly, and-
It's really, it's not that-
It's a two thousand-plus square foot footprint, right?
It's fifty-nine feet by fifty-one feet. I mean, it's a three-bedroom house, it's, I mean, I don't think it's oversized for the lot.
How, what's the acreage of the, what's the size of the lot?
It's one acre.
Oh, one acre, okay.
Well, again, our, our purpose is to minimize the variances whenever possible, so I don't see what the house actually looks like to know. My, my sense from the building department's floor plans is that it was a contemporary raised ranch?
Like a modified raised ranch.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but, so the question is, is there, why that footprint? Why, is there some other shape of a house that you could go with that would fit, or minimize, reduce the variance, whatever it is? That's all we have to ask the question, so.
Right. I, I mean, I don't, I don't see how they could change the size of it.
We ended up working with, you know, engineer to kind of design, design the house.
Okay.
And, you know, based on the plans, we even tried to look at it recently, to see if we could kind of move some rooms around towards the back to try to shimmy it in, it's just, it's not possible.
Okay, so is the house consistent with the character of the neighborhood? Is that what you're telling me?
We have some plans that you'd like to see.
That's-
Yeah, we have pictures and-
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's nice.
Okay, so other houses in this neighborhood are this size, this is not, you know?
Definitely.
Especially compared to that area that has the tennis court and all that.
That's what we need to understand, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So how, I'm not really honestly familiar with this area of Geneva Drive, so how busy an area is Geneva Drive? I don't think there's many houses on there, right?
Not very, we, we just got to meet our neighbors, because it's so quiet, you hardly ever see anybody out, or even cars, like, it's very, very quiet, it's very quiet, very residential.
So it's not necessarily, we're not, by doing this, you're not necessarily impacting many neighbors?
No.
Are you leaving screening up, are you leaving vegetation along Geneva Drive there?
So right now, there's currently three trees there, we would talk with, we would talk about even kind of putting some screening trees there, once we start building, that's absolutely, once everything's kind of set in.
Isn't that the garage?
Yeah, the garage is on that side.
Yeah, the garage is on the opposite side.
Yeah, 'cause we have to go from Mountain Pass into the house.
From Mountain Pass. With the type of fill that are required, it didn't make sense to swing from the other side.
What's the size of your, your top of the driveway area there? Do you have appropriate room to back a car out?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah?
From, from the right, from the right-hand side? Correct.
Yeah, from the right-hand side there.
Yeah, there's a little extension.
Thirty-five feet.
Yeah, it looks like.
Yeah, it looks much, it looks much smaller, so.
Yeah, it looks smaller on the plane.
That's your more feet on that side than to Geneva Drive. Geneva Drive is thirty-one feet.
But we wanna, but I guess it's more important to make sure they are backing up in their own driveway than moving the house over a little bit. I wonder why they were insisting on no driveway on the other street? Or did, maybe the street didn't exist?
It didn't, it probably wouldn't have cut this through.
Okay. Questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
Seems reasonable.
Get them to move Geneva Drive.
But a motion for a public hearing.
So moved.
I mean, whatever we're doing.
But they did that subdivision, Geneva wasn't even there.
Okay, that's, that's what we're hearing, yeah.
And then they put the road through, it was a narrow lot.
So I have a motion for a public hearing, is there a second?
I did say second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Pam, we'll give you your instructions for your sign, you do have a corner lot, so you will need two signs, please, okay?
Okay.
And then we'll see you next month.
You'll put those up tomorrow, you want those up like ASAP, I would imagine.
Uh, it has to be up twenty, it'll go by April 4th.
No problem.
It was the better, basically.
No problem, very good, thank you so much.